This meeting will now come to order. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice, sorry, Vice Mayor Vinsbacher.
Here.
Councilmember Patana.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Leoni.
Here.
Council liaison Boden.
Here.
And council liaison Camacho.
Here.
Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council's special meeting of March 15th, 2016. We have one item on the study session agenda this evening, and that is property maintenance enforcement. Mr. Swenson.
Thank you, Mayor Carlet. And that's right, we just have one item on our study session agenda this evening. It's an important item, and something that I know all of the councilmembers care a lot about, and that's making sure that we have excellent codes for the property maintenance standards within the community. And what we are presenting tonight are some ways that we can improve the administration of our property maintenance code, expand it in some ways, and along with the upcoming budget, where we'll be adding some additional resources, be able to improve our service delivery in this area. So with that, I'll turn it over to Susan DeLudin, our Deputy City Manager, who will lead the presentation. Susan?
Thank you, City Manager Swenson. Good evening, Mayor Carlet, and members of the Peoria City Council. I wanted to thank you for the opportunity for bringing this important issue forward. It's something that the policymakers have suggested to us from time to time, do an extensive code review, look at our property maintenance in the private properties, areas in the city and our neighborhoods, particularly take a look at derelict or abandoned homes, often owned by absentee owners, and see what we can do to bring up a higher level of enforcement on these. So with that in mind, we gathered together a group, and our goal was community building, preserving and enhancing the quality of life for our neighborhoods here in Peoria, and total planning, taking a group that has expertise from a variety of different areas on this topic and expertise in code to see what we can come up with. To that end, I put together a cross-functional team. The members, some of them are in the audience tonight, and two key members here are to my left. As Deputy City Manager, I was in charge of the cross-functional team with Steve Berg doing the legal analysis, our Chief Assistant City Attorney, Chris Hockes, our Planning and Community Development Director, because a lot of things that we do in neighborhoods, we can help through our neighborhood pride, our neighborhood grants, and other things. So he's an important player. Jay Davies, obviously, a very key player, our Deputy Director of Management Services Division, and in charge of code enforcement for the city along with a myriad of other things. Mike Berune, our Fire Prevention Inspector Supervisor, because a lot of these homes, when they become vacant or abandoned, or ISOs in the neighborhood, often it's because they're a burn house, they've had a fire. And Dennis Chase, of course, our Building Official, who administers our building code. And what we're talking about today is part of what people typically think about is the building code. The property maintenance code is part of that international building code. And it's one that we have not assertively put a lot of resources or gone into over the past years. Now, as the housing crisis lessens, as we have occupied houses almost throughout the city, and we've taken care of all the problems that were caused by the housing economy over the last four or five years, we had a lot of just cleanups and reorganization on our Peoria housing stock. Now that that's done, and our neighborhoods are looking good, we're trying to find some new mechanisms for property enforcement, and to make sure that our code has clear and specific requirements that our code enforcement team can implement, and that our legal team can support in court for the very few percentage of cases that actually do end up in court. So this interdepartmental team looked at different codes, both in the city of Peoria, but outside the city of Peoria for the last couple of months, and then we came up with a way, a new initiative, to increase our code enforcement to blighted vacant properties and needing fixing. I'm calling it our Neighborhood Nurturing Program, because often the neighborhoods really want these houses taken care of, because they're looking at them, and they're dealing with them, and it's affecting property values and things in their neighborhood. So tonight's staff will present you, and we'll start with the code review. We'll start with, how does the code work with our City Attorney's Office, with the goal of getting to Jay Davies' presentation, which is how do we actually implement this program? And as I mentioned, our entire cross-functional team is here somewhere in this audience that can also answer questions when we get to the conclusion. So with that, Steve, would you like to kind of explain the legal background and how we came to the conclusions that we came to as a group?
I would. Thank you, Susan. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So Susan indicated the working group began by looking at the city's existing property maintenance codes. And the most important one that we have is the International Property Maintenance Code, the 2012 edition, which the council has adopted and is put in City Code Section 5-4. And it's quite a comprehensive document. The International Property Maintenance Code is one of a series of international codes that have been adopted by various panels of experts, and the city has adopted a number of them through the years. So right now, we have in effect the International Fire Code, International Plumbing Code, Electrical Code, Energy Conservation Code, and a number of other ones. In the case of the International Property Maintenance Code, this was developed by a large group of code officials and building officials from across the United States, as well as from other countries, with the goals of being clear, of being specific, and being enforceable in a manner that will improve deficient properties. So the International Property Maintenance Code was adopted, and then as a national standard, and then we adopted it locally, and it's been in place prior additions the council had adopted before this most recent addition in 2012. And one thing to point out about the International Property Maintenance Code, its focus is on public health and safety. That's the stated goal within the code. But it's worth noting that in practice, what that also means is that the neighborhood aesthetics are protected as well, because you can imagine if the code's goals, which are to ensure that exterior walls, and doors, and windows, and roofs, and fences, and on and on, if those are all maintained in good order, then of course, the result's going to be the exterior of these buildings will look fine from the street, from the adjoining properties from the neighborhood. So while the specific purpose of the code is directed more at the health and safety of the building itself, it does meet our aesthetic goals as well. So in addition to International Property Maintenance Code, the city also has adopted a number of its own code provisions. Of course, the nuisance code is the one you'd all be familiar with. That's in Title 17 of the City Code. We've also adopted a number of other provisions over time that address different things that can come up in the property maintenance review when it comes. And what we like to look at it is, the international code is more like that building safety code that I talked about, whereas what we've done in the City Code is really address those community standards, those things that we want to see within the city. And just to make it a little bit more real, because you're probably wondering, okay, what are the differences between the two? Some examples, and this one stems directly out of the international code. The international code has a standard for weeds and yards, you know, for prohibition on certain circumstances, but it leaves a blank on what the height of weeds can be before it becomes a violation, with a note that says, "This is something we think is best dressed at the local level." So you decide, and you fill in the blank. So as you all are sure are aware, in Peoria, we have set that standard as six inches. So we've kind of supplemented the international code by saying weeds from six inches above, or whatever are in violation. Another area that we addressed in the nuisance code pretty extensively is the whole subject of dirt lots, and dust, and dust suppression, and we have a variety of standards that address what is, you know, quite obviously kind of a unique circumstance we have here, and our climate here in the desert southwest, it doesn't apply in a lot of other areas, but it's important for us to address it from an air quality and other standpoint. So that's another example. A third example is, our City Code has a number of provisions addressing the parking of recreational vehicles. Now, in the international code, that's not specifically identified, not a big issue apparently, but of course, as we know, quite a unique concern we have in Peoria, and so we have specific requirements within our City Code that code can enforce on RV parking. And then the final one is a broader one, and that's the subject of penalties. If you violate the code, what happens? The international code, it's another area where it's kind of stayed kind of broad, and said, "We think the level of penalties is probably something that you at a local level will be more comfortable addressing. You're going to have other codes that you enforce, and kind of, again, the community standards of what's an appropriate penalty in order to get compliance." So in our nuisance code, we have sections that deal with civil penalties, criminal penalties, and then the one that Jay's going to talk about the most in a minute, the concept of abating or correcting a violation. So all of those are things we've put in our City Code to kind of supplement what's in the international code, and then the two kind of work together to give us the broad spectrum of what we have available. I will note that the group did find, as it was looking through all the City Code provisions, that we did have to kind of hunt a little bit through some of the titles of the City Code to find some of these provisions, and it occurred to us that probably one thing we should do is come back to the council later meeting with an ordinance that kind of cleans that up a little bit. We're going to try to consolidate some of those provisions in Title 17, the nuisance code, so they're all in one place. So when staff or members of the public are looking for the regulations, it's kind of, you know, they can find them in one place. So we'll be coming back to you later with kind of a cleanup ordinance that does that. I won't change the substance, just kind of consolidating some of them. So as Susan mentioned, after we looked at all of the existing City Code provisions, then our task was, let's compare it to best practices in other cities to see if we're missing anything, and there are things that we should have. And what we found by doing that review is that first, a number of cities have adopted this international code, both locally and across the country. This is a growing kind of gold standard for what international property maintenance, or what property maintenance code should be, and so more cities are adopting this code. There are some cities that haven't adopted it yet, and they still have kind of the traditional nuisance code or other sorts of provisions. So we took a look at those, but when we compared what we have in the property maintenance code plus the City Code provisions, we found that we were comparable, and in many cases, we went beyond. We were more strict than what we found in these other City Codes. So the conclusion of the working group was that we don't need to add any additional code provisions in order to reach the level of protection from a property maintenance standpoint that we're looking for. Now that said, what we did discover, and what now I'm going to turn it over to Jay to talk about, is that there are some opportunities available under our existing codes to increase the compliance efforts, and so that's what Jay's going to talk about. Take it away.
Thanks, Steve. So moving from the legal background to the kind of operational piece of this, just to put a little bit of perspective on this, as a reminder, about 97% to 98% of our code cases are resolved through voluntary compliance. You can go back years and years and years, and those numbers remain very consistent. So after receiving a notice from code enforcement, 97%, 98% of folks resolve that on their own, which is great news. In about 2% of our cases, that doesn't happen, and we end up having to take enforcement action, issue a citation, that ultimately goes to court or is pled out at some level, but true enforcement action is taken. And what's left, typically less than about half a percent, is the abatement process, and that's what we're here to talk about this evening. So what is abatement? Abatement is where the property owner is not responsive. They ignore us, or they just simply refuse to cooperate. Oftentimes, these are vacant properties that are bank-owned. We don't really have an individual to cite. They're non-responsive, and ultimately, a city contractor clears that violation as opposed to the property owner. So the abatement process, like anything we do, there's a process. This process is governed by both state law as well as Peoria City Ordinance, and that process includes, of course, an initial notice. Once we determine that we're going to have to go into the abatement process, we have to post the property. And if you'll see in this picture, if you look in that front window, you see one of our postings there in that window. We tend to post it right there. Mailing is sufficient. We prefer to go a step further and post it visibly right there on the property, so the owner has no question as to our presence there and our interests. The posting is required by law to remain in place for 30 days, to give the owner 30 days to understand what we're going to do if they don't do it, and then, of course, for them to take appropriate action. There are instances where we can bypass that 30-day posting. That's only in an emergency, where, say, there's a pool, and the pool fence is down, and the exterior block wall is down, and of course, that creates an immediate hazard to children, things of that nature, emergency abatements, we can do instantly and not have to do that posting. Those are rare. Typically, the abatements we do require the 30-day posting. As that 30 days comes to an end, and we realize no action is occurring on the homeowner's part, we begin assigning contractors to do the work. So we have contractors that will go out and do whatever's required to clear the violation. Once that's done, and they've presented us with the bill, we pay the bill, but then we file a lien against the property. That allows that, at some point, we hope to get our money back, get our investment back. Leans may be satisfied upon the transfer of the property. And when we look back over the years, we find that we tend to recoup those investments, on average, about 50% a year. Not that it's necessarily the same year, but we've got leans going back as long as we've been doing abatements. And as those properties turn over, those leans get satisfied, and again, on average, we see about 50% of what we spend every year, regardless of what that is, coming back in the form of leans being satisfied. Up till now, the types of abatements we've done, we'll call those the traditional abatements, tend to involve the following hazards: weeds, which may become a fire hazard, broken or missing fences and walls, which of course can allow access to pools or other hazards, broken or missing windows or doors, which can allow unauthorized use or access to a property, and then accumulation of debris. That's what we typically abate under those conditions. Our current practice, when we encounter a building, particularly one that needs to be boarded up or fenced up, whether that's due to a fire, lack of construction progress, or some other dilapidating condition to the home, what we've done historically is simply require either the property owner, or in the absence of their activity, our own abatement, to render them safe, which typically looks like what you see in this picture. Boarded-up windows, boarded-up doors, in some cases, a chain-link fence or some other type of fence around the property to keep children out, to keep vagrants out, you know, to secure the property. Historically, that's what we've done to address these types of properties. However, as part of this working group's tackling this problem, evaluating this problem, we realized the IPMC actually has some additional tools that we could use to enhance neighborhood livability and make the situation even better. What the IPMC does allow is, when we deem a property to be unsafe, we can require or ourselves abate a property to board up condition, as I've described. But what we can do further under IPMC is we can actually limit that to one year. We can say, "You've got a year, board it up, fence it up, but during that year, you need to get things together. You need to replace the windows, you need to, you know, restore the property to its original condition, you know, whatever it takes to get it back up to kind of a livable situation." At the one-year point, in conjunction with the building safety supervisor, we can determine that if that has not progressed, if it's still just in a boarded-up condition, then we can require them to either demolish it, or if they won't, we could demolish it. Or alternatively, in special cases, we could actually restore the property, if it was in the interest of the city, the community, the neighborhood, to restore the property to at least a shell building. Probably wouldn't invest in full restoration, but restore it to a full shell building. If it was missing a roof, maybe put a roof back on. If it was missing doors and windows, restore the doors and windows, as opposed to demolishing So what we're looking for with these abatements is really a more permanent solution. Traditionally, we see properties that need to be abated, they tend to boomerang on us. We abate them once, because nobody was taking care of it, well, it's not surprising then that nobody takes care of it after we abate it, so we tend to abate these homes over and over again. So what we're looking at with this solution is a cure versus a Band-Aid-type solution. If you look at the home in the picture here, if you can make it out, that's actually plywood as a garage door. This house is over in the southwest part of the city. Good news, I was by this house this morning, and they've pulled permits and are actually restoring this house. Not us, but the property owner. They're well underway getting that back. It suffered from a fire, and although you can't really tell from the outside other than the wood, it's quite a job they've got ahead of them. At any rate, absent of their involvement, looking at this house, it's the only house on the street that has a plywood garage door, as you might imagine. That brings with it some problems. That signals to, you know, folks that it's vacant, nobody's necessarily giving it the care or attention that it needs, that tends to draw vandalism, graffiti, additional damage. In my experience, plywood doors aren't as durable as, you know, their original counterparts. They're easily defeated, which allows people access into the homes, and it's just a vicious cycle. And these homes tend to bring down, you know, the quality of life for those that have to look at them on a daily basis. So by using the existing code and the IPMC tools to eliminate or restore this to a shell, we can improve these situations in the community. And in terms of making that decision on whether we would demolish or restore, we would do that on a case-by-case basis, using much of the same team that Susan described, kind of a multi-functional, kind of cross-functional team of the city, weighing the decision in terms of what's best for the community on a case-by-case basis. Obviously, that's going to vary from community to community, and frankly, from property to property. So in terms of how we implement abatements, our typical abatements, the ones we've been doing for years, they tend to run an average of about $600 to the contractor costs to clear the weeds, to remove the debris, to board up a window. We run about $600. Moving into these types of abatements, where we would be demolishing maybe a single-family home, or, you know, putting a roof back on, things of that nature, depending on what was needed, we're talking about 10 times that figure. For each property, we're looking at about $5,000 to $6,000. And because these projects would be larger, they would be more labor-intensive, there's a more extensive bid process, there would be the time and work involved in evaluating the restore-versus-demolish decision, and then there's an appeal process. As you might imagine, property owners have an interest and get very curious when you talk about demolishing their buildings. So with that, it's more labor-intensive and more expensive than a typical abatement. At this point, the benefits are probably starting to emerge. We're talking about enhanced neighborhood aesthetics, removing hazards, minimizing the repeat efforts of our staff, and frankly, the repeat frustration of neighbors who constantly see these properties having to be dealt with. Then lastly, simply through all of that, enhancing neighborhood livability. So our next steps are pretty clear. It's about securing resources, and at this point, those resources include the additional upfront costs that we just talked about, as well as some labor for coordinating these enhanced efforts.
Thank you, Jay. And thank you, Mayor. I know that some of you have questions, but in conclusion, I wanted to tell how we intend to move forward with this initiative. Carl has included money in the FY '17 budget with the intent of adding a new FTE, a new code enforcement staff, and some additional money for abatement and cleanup costs. What we're doing is we're budgeting about five to six homes at the $6,000 level. Now, we may get compliance without having to spend this money, and we fully expect to get a bunch of this money returned when the homes actually are abated. But at this point in time, our intent is to include this with the fiscal year 17 budget, and then start up the program in the new fiscal year. However, we will be looking at properties and providing some notice, and Jay and I were talking this morning to maybe posting some of them and getting that started even before the actual time of launch. Because the process is long, the Property Maintenance Code requires one year with already constructed homes, with homes that are under construction, it actually gives you two years to clean up the act. So those things take a long time, but you also want to be very prepared for legal issues, for court actions. And I just want to reiterate that my thanks to the team, because the team did a really good job, and it was a lot of work, and we met every week. And I want to reinforce the fact that we have been enforcing our International Property Maintenance Code, but it's the level of enforcement. You know, we have been doing, like Jay described, making it safe, doing a lot of cleanups where there's junk cars, where there's weeds, or abandoned swimming pools, taking care of those, securing, fencing, boarding, but this is a different level. This is a different level of enforcement, and it has some aesthetic, you know, aspect to it, that we have been doing the very, very basic level of service. So we think it would be a good area to focus, and as you have seen in the presentation, since it takes a year to decide and have recommendations and move forward on these cases, we can come back and report to council on our progress, and hopefully, we'll get most of them to comply on their own, but then we can bring back report, how it's worked between abatement, demolition, and actually getting voluntary cleanups. We took a tour today, we have some priority houses, we already know addresses, but there may be some that you would want to send to either of us or the legal office, you know, as you think about it and look around your neighborhood. So with that, that concludes our presentation, and we're ready for any questions Mayor and Council may have.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for all the work that you've done on this. I just want to verify one thing. Our current code that we already have in place allows us to do this, allows us to take this step in, this second tier, if you will.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, we don't have to rewrite anything.
We don't have to adopt anything new.
Okay.
Which is good.
All right. Councilmember Leoni?
Yes, thank you. Couple of questions. You know, on this abatement, I'm pretty familiar with that. You probably know. Number one, what are we charging? $500 to get it cleaned up, front and back?
Councilmember Leoni, it would depend on the violation, the contractor. Yeah, the contractor goes out, looks at what needs to be done, and provides us a quote. So it'd really vary on what needed to be done, whether we're boarding up windows, clearing debris, cutting weeds. The average is about $600, so, you know, some are less, some are more.
And do we get our money back?
Over time, we do. I mean, ultimately, when the lien, when the property transfers, it's sold to somebody else, our lien is part of that transaction. So eventually, we definitely will see our money back, and as I mentioned, we tend to average about half of what we spend each year in abatements, we see come back as revenue on previous leans.
Now, when you go into a piece of property, like I've got one in Sun Air, and you probably know about it, it's every three or four months, they let it grow. And the lady that owns the house, her daughter lives right down the street. So what do we do with something like that when they know that the weeds got to be taken out, has to be cut, and then we have to call somebody to clean it up? What can we do with that, about, you know, with the people? The people that own the house?
Right. With repeat offenders are, and that's a little bit different than the abatement process, but our code does allow for enhanced penalties for repeat offenders, and that would fall under the enforcement piece, those 2% of cases where folks are not voluntarily complying.
Do we have many of those?
We do. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but yeah, I mean, there certainly is a percentage of our community that we tend to deal with on a regular basis, particularly with weeds on an annual basis.
Now, when you have a contractor, it's his job just to go in with the cutter and cut them down, or dig them, dig them up from the roots, because if you don't dig them up from the roots, they're going to grow right back in about a week or two weeks. So what's the contractor supposed to do?
Yeah, and I'll be honest with you, I'm not familiar with what process he's performing. It probably depends on the severity of the property.
Tonight, what we were wanting to do is not focus on any specific addresses or specific areas, but look at this as a policy that we're going forward, but we can take a look at a specific address and get back to you with that question. But we can take a look at a specific address and get back to you with that question and talk with you about that. We'll send some information, if that's okay.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. Well, I really, really appreciate the work of this group. I brought this back last November after attending the state conference and said, "Why are these other cities doing this and we aren't?" So I really, really appreciate your hard work. It's not easy, I know, it's not easy, but, and I don't mean to sound negative or anything like that, but I guess I have to ask, I'm surprised that we already had this code in place because from what I was hearing at this conference from other cities, it just didn't sound like we could have had it because we weren't doing those things. So if we have it, why have we not been doing this already if the city council at some point in the past had adopted this international code? We did part of it. Was it staffing? We didn't have the staff for it or does anybody know that?
I think that's a very reasonable question and Jay may want to hop on here, but I think as I looked at it and I asked the question myself, we've had a lot of deep discussions with our group. It was, the focus of our efforts has been short-term cleanup to bring something to public safety standards, something that would not harm. We have not been, until recently, when you asked about the policy and others, bringing into the equation the aesthetic and the broader neighborhood quality goals. It is a matter of resources and as you know, through the years, 2009, 10, 11, 12, up until '13, we had many, we had thousands of properties throughout the city that were changing hands, that were foreclosed, that we were dealing with weeds, cleanup, fencing, all sorts of things during the housing crisis. So we focused our limited resources and as the economy has come back, we're starting to focus some now more on midterm and longer-term goals that we didn't have the luxury really of staffing or resources. As Jay mentioned, it costs 10 times as much to abate the code at this level. And I think maybe some of the reason, and Steve might correct me here, some of the other cities like to tout the code is, that they might have, is that they adopted it as their own code, but it doesn't make it any different or any more enforceable.
Right.
And we can't go to the conference and talk about the IPMC because that's adopted nationwide.
I don't plan to.
You know what I mean? But so sometimes in lieu of having the higher standards already in place, they'll form something that's very specific to their needs and then...
Okay, I had another question.
It's resources, really.
Thank you, Susan. That's what I figured, that and we hadn't really stressed that part.
Right.
But I think what Carlos is talking about, even though it's habitable, the lady who every three or four months, she just waits for the city to call and then that's her signal to do it. I think on a lot of these, where nobody lives there, they just do exactly what they're told to do and no more. And we haven't pressed them to do that. Okay, a real concern of mine, and I heard somebody say that this is the international property code.
No, no, no.
What? Why a year? We've already lived, some of these have already been 10 years. Can't we retroactively say you had your year? Is that actually in the code, the international code? So from the time you warn them or tell them they have to do it, they can have a year to let it still sit there like that?
The actual language in the IPMC shows steps. The first step is rendering it safe and that's where the boarding comes up. And if you look at the language in the IPMC, it says, "Step one is we're requiring you or if you don't, we will board this up, fence this up." And then the presumption is you then have time, now that you've rendered it safe, to render it more aesthetically pleasing, you know, for lack of a better term. And it takes time to do that in many cases. So it presumes that over that year, those improvements are being made. And the code language then gives the building official the authority to come in after a year and say, "You've had boards up for a year, it's time to move forward." And in the meantime, we have posted that at the beginning and let them know that over this year, you need to be making improvements or at the end of this year, we'll make them.
Okay, Jay, and on that same, I'm sorry?
Can I add something to the answer, Councilmember Hunt? And this is in the context of some of the other discussions we've been having about the existing code and existing processes being very long. And the question, the follow-up question that I have, and it's really for you, Steve, when we talk about the ability to modify the international code at the local level, is that timeframe something that we could evaluate and potentially change to have a shorter timeframe if that was the policy direction of the council?
There's nothing in the international code that would prohibit us from doing so. I think it, you know, we'd have to talk about what that new timeframe would be. There's certainly some due process considerations.
Right.
And that's why a standard like this is put in the code. And normally, if we're varying from it, we want to show some evidence that we have some local conditions that would justify a variance from the international standard and you might have to convince me some on that one. So it's something we'd have to talk about. But I did, when we were talking about this prepping for this study session late yesterday, this issue came up. And so I went back and looked at one of the codes that we had examined in this process. It's from an East Valley city that has been touted as having a really great code. And all they did, they don't use a one-year, what they use is 366 days within a two-year period. So it's a little better because what it allows for is somebody who gets compliance for a little bit and then doesn't get it again. So I see where it's a little stronger. But in essence, it's pretty much a one-year period. And yeah, I've not seen folks go much shorter than that.
Okay, well, I guess, and not to put you on the spot, but I guess I would like, we'll go back and look at that because I think we've been looking at some of the other timeframes throughout the enforcement regime of our codes and maybe that's something, Mayor, that we can report back on at a future meeting.
Good. Thank you. Kathy, I'm still, okay, go ahead. I think that's a really, really great idea because the ones I'm thinking of in my neighborhoods have literally been upwards five to 10 years and I think another six months should be plenty because they're, obviously, they're just not going to do anything without that. But say it is a year, also on a couple of these properties, they're taller than me and dead grass and weeds. That comes under our other part that we do all the time. And I don't know why they haven't been cited and hauled off because some of these have been a couple of years also. They're right downtown, they've just been allowed to, the grass is overtaking the house. And so we could ameliorate that earlier than the year certainly, just on the part of the code that we are enforcing, correct?
Correct.
Let's do it. Okay. And then the other part you mentioned was the, I know that we do, I'm not sure exactly what we do, but I know that for our PM 3 that we do ask that dirt be covered with some kind of substance. Okay. Say this is the property and here's the house, this is all just dirt and open. What would their responsibility be on that? There's no other structures, they don't drive on it. There's just, they have like four or five lots and only one of them has a structure, but it's all dirt.
There are, the way we address landscaping, really is how it is addressed in the code, as newer homes are being built, and I apologize, I don't remember the exact year, but there was a year at which the council actually adopted this ordinance and it says, "Moving forward, homes have to be, the yards have to be landscaped." Prior to that, though, in other words, homes were grandfathered. So if you built a home prior to that or purchased a home prior to that, you can have a dirt yard. You can't drive on it, you can't park on it, that goes to the PM 10 standards. But many of the older homes simply are at that age where there was no requirement, so they're grandfathered.
Okay. And one more question and then that's it. This is something that really bugs me and I didn't hear it addressed, so I don't know if it's something that we need to set a slightly different policy on, but I know we have a dead tree policy. You're not supposed to just let a dead tree be on your property. What if the tree is obviously dead for all intents and purposes? It's not even on life supports, but it's got suckers coming up from the bottom, it's got one little branch with two leaves on it. I know that when I've called back on those, it's been, "Well, that tree was deemed still alive because it's got..." And it stays that way for years and it is huge and for all intents and purposes, it's a dead tree. So can we address that?
We do have a means, and you mentioned, we have a code that prohibits dead vegetation and that's the code we use for trees. The way it works, to peel back the curtain, is nobody in code is a tree expert. We consult with somebody over in community services who services landscaping throughout the city. He's our expert and frankly, if he says it's alive, we move on. If he says it's dead, then we'll pursue enforcement action.
Can we make a code that says how many branches have to have? I mean, it is ridiculous and I know that this is the process.
I think we can take a look at that because really, the whole idea of the discussion we're having tonight and the direction that we're trying to turn a corner here is a higher level of enforcement.
Absolutely.
And aesthetic and it, the standard that we've been using can be looked at. So I'm jotting it down. As I mentioned, we will be back to report at some time.
Again, I really appreciate this. Thank you guys so much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Councilmember Leonie? And keep in mind that we're not talking about individual properties here. If you want to talk about individual properties, you can do that offline after the meeting.
I meant to ask you, what does co-compliance officers do besides write a document?
They're responsible for educating and enforcing the codes throughout the community. So they make contact. Our process changed a few years ago where we place a high emphasis on an initial face-to-face contact. So they're trying to knock on doors and make, have that conversation, that first conversation with folks, kind of explain what the code is, educate them about what their responsibility is. And then from there, again, go through a process that we've discussed that involves an initial code advisory, follow-up inspections. The code actually requires, speaking of the IPMC, it actually dictates a pretty heavy level of case management. So part of their workday involves documentation, photographs, audio recordings of contacts, entering all of these documents and supporting files into a case management system. So that makes up the work case.
Does code wait till somebody calls in before they go down and look at the problem?
No, sir. In fact, looking back many, many years, about 50% of our cases are initiated proactively.
You know, and I was talking about this house with the weeds and you go down there and you clean them up and they don't really get the roots out. So maybe four, five, maybe even six months, they come back again. Why can't code go down and keep on checking it out rather than wait till somebody calls in?
It's a fair question. I think it just comes down to a matter of resources.
Okay, if I might interrupt here. We have an issue in place with, we have two issues in place. And one of them is the code, the policy that we have in place that talks about the amount of time that somebody has to comply. And I think that that's something that you are hearing tonight needs to be readdressed. And I would like to bring that back for council to reassess how much time somebody has for compliance and how we want to assess those cases that are recurring.
Good, we would like that too.
Okay. And so in addition to that, then, any questions tonight on the abatement that we're discussing? Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. Jay, I'd like to ask you, I know only very few of the people wind up going to court, but my question to you is, are the fines adequate enough in court to deter further violations? And is the court regulated on the amount of money they can charge somebody?
Councilwoman Patena, I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure about the regulation piece. In terms of the fines, what we tend to see is a range of fines. The code certainly places a maximum. The court certainly has the leeway, and you see that quite a bit, where depending on the defendant's, you know, forthcoming about their responsibility or perhaps between being cited and coming to court, they've cleared the violation. In some cases, you know, the court will find them responsible and then suspend the fine. So there's quite a variety of ways that the court handles that.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Kemp's coming down. I don't believe that other than what we do by code, that the court has any limitations on what the fines could be.
No, the only limitation the court would have is that because these are designated by misdemeanors, the, depending on the classification, the court would be limited by statute. And for example, like a class one misdemeanor is limited to a maximum fine of $2,500. So the court cannot impose a fine of $3,000 on an individual. And if it's a class two, it's limited to a fine of $750. One of the things the court has to also take into account is that there is roughly about a 116% surcharge. So on a number of these fines, if the court imposes a fine of $200, the actual fine that the person is paying is about $430 because of the surcharges. But there's no, short of the statutory limitations, there's no limitation on fines other than the statutory ones.
Okay. And my second question is, when you're talking about abatement, whether you're going to restore a building or you're going to knock a building down, sometimes you could have as many as seven or eight owners. And it could go years before you actually get in touch with these owners to agree to do whatever it is you want to do. So is there any way of circumventing that at all, that process, or do you always have to get in touch with every owner?
Actually, our posting process takes care of that. In theory, we could succeed in contacting nobody. As long as we lawfully post the property, we've met that standard and that's all that's required.
Any other questions? Okay, I just want to make a statement here. It seems like there are a lot of issues that we have been adhering to, which are possible just policy changes. And those kinds of things need to be, need to have policy decisions made. And so bringing these things to our attention instead of just a traditional use or a traditional interpretation of this code, it needs to be, it needs to have the advice of policy. And so in this case, this is an exact example of one where we have had a lot of issues that could be fixed with a code we already have in place, if we were just using it in a way that would be more beneficial, in a way that we could easily change a policy. Or actually, it doesn't even need our policy change, we already have it in effect, we just have not been using it in the way that we want. And so I think that, well, I'm hoping that there aren't more of these kinds of things, but I think that we're going to need to bring a lot of our codes, if not all of our codes, to the forefront and take a look at all of them and determine if they're being used to, in the most effective and efficient way that we want to use them here in Peoria.
And Mayor Carlin, if I may respond to that. We agree, I agree with that. And in the budget that I'll be presenting at the next council meeting, there's funds set aside to go through the entire code because I think there's some interpretations that we're finding in the context of looking at this that could have been made differently. And I want to make sure that we have clarity from the policy direction from the council with respect to not only the administrative enforcement side or implementation side, but also to the legal interpretation as well, so that there's an iterative process. So you can be confident, we can be confident, that the code is being administered in the way that you want.
Good. Good. I'm very glad to hear that. Okay, and again, thank you for the work that you've done on this. And obviously, we want this abatement policy to be used in the grander scheme of things. All right? Thank you very much. With that, we are adjourned.